Thanks, everybody for coming. This is the first Finance Committee of two thousand twenty-three. Appreciate it. The members of the Finance Committee are Zeta, Councilor Zeta Govan and Councilor Tracy Whitfield. And myself, I'm Chair this year. So I've got my agenda up here. I'm ready to go. I think I, Councilor Hurst just came on, if I'm not mistaken. Welcome, Councilor Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Okay, item one. Mass in motion, grant increase. Is somebody from the Finance team covering that, or is Helen here?
Thank you, Councilor Allen. Yes, this is a grant for our Health and Human Services Department. They get it year over year. It is a competitive grant. This is a small increase to the overall award. This is an increase to the current grant of twenty-nine thousand fifty-three dollars.
So the increase is twenty-nine thousand, but there's already a grant in play that we've been working with?
That's correct.
Okay, great. I used to be pretty familiar with that grant. Is it anyone here to say add any more than, than Lindsey gave us any more info?
Um, no, I don't believe Helen's here because it's under fifty thousand, so generally they, they don't come to the city council meetings.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments or questions on it? If not, we'll move to item two. Okay, thanks for your attention. Bill's a prior year is item two, nine hundred and some odd dollars. Lindsey, is that, is that yours to talk about?
Yes, these are two invoices from fiscal twenty-two, a small forty-eight dollars from the Law Department, and then an invoice for about nine hundred dollars for assessors. And we're just requesting to use twenty-three funds to pay the twenty-two invoice.
Were you asking that? Are you, that's why it's on here, right?
Yeah, the order is requesting.
Right. Sounds good to me. Any, any questions for any councilors, Councilor Govan or Councilor Whitfield? Or anybody?
What, what were we on?
Uh, item two, Bill's a prior year, nine hundred and some, some odd dollars.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not hearing any questions. Let's move on to item three, and this is where Bill Mahoney comes into play here. Bill, glad to have you on, and I'm glad you got some, these contracts to the point where they're ready to come before us. Could you give us a, I assume you'll handle the next three? And start us off with, you know, a quick overview info on, on each one of them, and then we'll go, we'll, we'll take each one separately. But with this one says we're starting with the Service Employees International Union. That one's first. The police contract is second, and the library contract is third.
Good evening, everyone. This is the smallest of our three unions that you'll be hearing about this evening. There's ten employees in this bargaining unit. It includes the engineering aides at DPW, the civil engineer one, the civil engineer three, and the civil engineer four. Negotiations began on September ninth, two thousand twenty-one. We had seven bargaining sessions, and this was actually followed by approximately nine mediation sessions. It's actually two contracts like we typically do. The first one covers the period of July one, two thousand twenty-one to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two, and the second one covers the period of July one, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five. The colas in this contract are following the pattern that we've established of two, 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 and two. We have a six hundred dollar signing bonus for employees that don't have a bachelor's of science degree in civil or environmental engineering, and for employees that do have a bachelor's of science degree in those fields, they'll have a fifteen dollar a week bonus added to their, to their weekly pay. We cleaned up the Janus Agency Fee Language in this contract. We increased the boot gear allowance from one hundred and fifty dollars annually to one hundred and seventy-five, and we've added Juneteenth as a holiday to this contract.
Excellent. Sounds good. Ten employees, two, two percent a year for four years roughly. Throw it out to the council, any questions from anybody about this service, Service Employees International Union contract?
I have a question, um, Mr. Chair.
Yep, that's great. Go right ahead. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. Um, why is it only those degrees that get the fifteen dollars a week?
Well, it's, it's because they're engineers, so we're looking for degrees in civil engineering or environmental engineering, because that's what's directly tied to their work.
Now, I'm sorry, this contract is for who?
This is for the SCIU local eight-eight-eight. It's the city's engineering department, under, or the engineers underneath the Department of Public Works.
Okay, so you're just trying to encourage engineering degrees?
Yes, that's correct, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for your question, Councilor Whitfield. Anyone else on this contract? Any other questions? Okay, hearing not, move on.
I have my hand, I have my hand raised in the queue.
I'm sorry.
That's quite all right.
I, I got, I gotta figure out this, what, I gotta watch what everybody's raising their hand. My, my apologies. Go ahead.
That's quite all right. Bill, just a quick question. Are we still giving these individuals the Juneteenth holiday off even though they hadn't had it negotiated in their contract yet?
So what we did, thank, thank you, Counselor, for the question. What we did was, we did memorandums of agreement for the Juneteenth holiday, and then we've been negotiating it into the contracts. So while negotiations were pending, we were doing it under an MOA.
Okay, and that's, and that's with all bargaining units, correct?
Uh, I, I would imagine it's with everybody. I, I can tell you that, like, for instance, in this contract, it's in there, and I think the other two contracts that you're gonna see tonight, I believe we got it in both of those as well.
But there's nobody being left out of being able to take the holiday. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think that's accurate.
You think, or you know?
I can go back and check, Counselor, between five-thirty and seven tonight. I'll go through all those contracts, and I'm pretty sure we got everything.
No, it, it's not, it's not necessary. If you could just check and just give me a buzz, or shoot me an email and just confirm. I mean, that would be problematic if we're celebrating as a city and as a state, and there are some folks that are left out.
I think to clarify, I think there's either one or two contracts that just reference and says, you know, if the city adopts a holiday, we get it.
Got it.
We just give it automatically. Might be one of those.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thanks, Counselor Hurst, and Counselor Walsh. I see your hand is up as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good luck in your new role. Um, yeah, Bill, I just had a question about the, the engineers. Do you have a problem trying to find engineers for this department? I know some other departments said that they have a hard time. Do you?
Well, I think we're pretty much fully staffed at this point. We might have one vacancy. I see Director Signoli is on this call as well, but I think we might be up to full staffing with this group. We, we do have some problems bringing in some folks. It's a, it's a, it's a tough climate right now in, in human resources, but I think we might be okay in this group.
So as far as?
I'm sorry, to, to interrupt, Bill, we have, we have one opening in the division right now for engineers that's been open for about eight months, and we've had a number of people apply and have gone through negotiations. Two of them from other communities and one from the state who at the last minute backed out. Uh, and so right now, we still have an opening of one position in the department.
Okay, yeah, and I was just gonna, going to ask, how does the salary of the City of Springfield compare for people in this field that have those degrees?
It's a, it depends on how you're doing a comparison. Our big comparison is basically to the mass DOT. And the mass DOT, our starting salaries are actually higher than mass DOT, and our first three steps are higher than mass DOT. After about seven years of service, to seven to nine years of service, depending upon the position, they match pretty well. But in, in, as far as then matching into the private industry, private industry is all over the place at this point. These employees, one of the things that we also talked about was getting professional engineering licenses. None of these employees, except for our city engineer and myself, have PE licenses, so trying to find, you know, we've always had good luck finding people within the city, but the last year, eight months or so, has been kind of difficult. The salary, I, you know, I use the word competitive. It is competitive, and we do have a step process there, so it's not a stagnant salary moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, Catering, for your question. Any other questions on this contract? I don't see any hands in the queue. Okay, thanks, everybody. We'll move on to the next one, which is the collective bargaining contract for the Police Officers International Brotherhood of Police. Bill, would you start us off on that?
Yep, so there's, there's approximately four hundred employees in this bargaining unit. Bargaining consists of all sworn officers below the rank of sergeant. Negotiations began on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. We had approximately fourteen bargaining sessions. We had approximately two mediation sessions, and what had happened is we had been in bargaining for a while. We went to mediation, then we just came back, and we actually finished this in negotiations at the table for a bargaining session. While we, while we were bargaining this, there was another negotiation going on with the Department of Justice. There's a settlement agreement. And what we were doing is we were writing our proposals early on in this to, to address issues that were being raised in that other set of negotiations. So we ended up with two contracts. One is, the first one is July first, two thousand and twenty, to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. The second contract covers the period of July one, two thousand twenty-one, to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. The wage increases are three point seven five, three point seven five, three point seven five, and three point seven five. It's significant to note that we changed the, the length of time that a complaint could be filed, so that now interdepartmental charges have to be brought within a hundred and twenty days instead of ninety days, but hearing sixty days thereafter. If for some reason that's beyond the control of the city, we couldn't get it done in a hundred and twenty days, we can bring it, we can still bring it forward, which is a significant change in this contract. We've agreed that the IAU and Forest Investigation Team, those interviews will be audio recorded. We've agreed that the IAU attorney may be required to make a recommendation to a hearing officer or police superintendent as to whether or not charges should be sustained and found or exonerated. We agree that disciplinary hearings will be audio or video audio recorded at our discretion, and that those recordings will be made available to the compliance evaluator. We've, 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 we've changed the language in the outside detail rate. It, it was reading step five in the contract, which had been the maximum step. We just changed it to the maximum step. We added Juneteenth as a named holiday here. We've increased the number of vacation days an employee can carry over from one year to the next, from, from fourteen to sixteen. Significantly, we are adding name tags to the, to the uniforms of the officers while they're in their regular uniform. It'll have their, their position, I'm sorry, their, their title, their first initial, and their last name. We've added a performance evaluation program. We've added a field training officer program. We've updated the body worn camera policy. And we've, we've, we've put in a disciplinary matrix. And it should be noted that the body worn camera policy and the disciplinary matrix, although they're very thorough, and I know you all have received a copy of the tentative agreement, which is about a hundred and forty pages here, we've left those items open for the next ninety days, if you ratify tonight, for the, for the city and the union to talk about, are there any changes that we want to make to those policies? If they, if we don't make any changes, those policies stand as written.
Bill, do you, are you all set, Bill, with your opening remarks?
I am, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Could you tell us the financial, total financial impact of this?
It'll be, it'll be fifteen percent over four years, so it's three point seven five each year. I don't know if finance wants to weigh in on that at all, but those are the colas.
Thank you.
The total cost over each year is about one point one to one point two million?
A year?
Yes.
Per year? Okay, and you guys have approved the amount of money that's part of this contract?
That's correct.
All right, great, thanks. Catering, your hand is up. I don't know if it's?
Oh, well, yeah, I didn't ever took it down, but thanks, I do have questions. So, Bill, you said fourteen? Fourteen bargaining. Is that a lot?
It, it's all relative, Counselor. Sometimes it's, sometimes you get them done pretty fast, and sometimes they are, they can go on for a while, so. You know, we, we had, we had gotten into, we had pretty much regular main table negotiations, and then it ended up with the Massachusetts Joint Labor Management Committee for a couple mediation sessions. Then we just sat down in a couple small groups and tried to work through the differences between our position and the union's position, and that really got a lot of, that got a lot of motion. And it got us to the point that we can get the full teams back together again, and, and, and we did, and we, we got the deal done.
Yeah, and, and can you tell us why you had to go to what, was it mediation or arbitration? Mediation?
It, it's just, it was just mediation. It's, it's, it's pretty common for negotiations to go to mediation, particularly now coming out of COVID. More and more cases, particularly in police and fire, are, are going to the jail and safe. It, it's getting very common.
Okay, and was it, I don't know how to put it, but what was the impact of the DOJ on, on all this?
Well, well, certainly, you know, there's a, you know, a lengthy settlement agreement with DOJ, and there are some pieces of that that affect labor relations, and then a, the majority of it don't affect labor relations. So what we were doing is we were going through the agreement while it was being negotiated and identifying the labor relations issues, and then working on them. So you'll see those, those policy, the major policies that we put in there, the performance evaluation, the, the FTO program and the disciplinary matrix. You know, we, we kind of, you know, we did a ton of research on that, gathered some, some policies from around the United States, and then narrowed it down and focused on a couple of them that we wanted to use for, for this, for this contract.
Okay, well, well, thank you. Appreciate it, and I'm sure my colleagues have other questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Whitfield, I see your hand is up. You're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Bill, you said that first, now I want to ask finance, it's one point three million over to three years, or roughly that. Where is the funds coming from? Where are the funds coming from?
So right now, we're gonna be using the salary savings to pay for the retro, and we're gonna monitor the account, and if we need to come back to the council later in the fiscal year, we'll come back for an additional appropriation.
Okay. Um, Bill, when you said the disciplinary measure, hearings will be recorded at your discretion, what does that mean? Like, when won't they be recorded?
I, I, I think they will always be recorded, but it's at the employer's discretion, and it, it just leaves the, the decision-making in the hands of the employer and not with someone else, so.
Employer, the City of Springfield?
The City of Springfield. It'll be the police department will, will be making that decision, but the, 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 based on the DOJ settlement, we'll be recording those hearings.
So the settlement is requiring it?
Yes, I believe that was one of the issues in the settlement agreement.
So why can't we take out your discretion? Because I don't trust all of the city's discretion.
It, it's at the, it's at the employer's discretion. If, if something happened, and for whatever reason, we couldn't get equipment, we could still go forward, but we're going forward. I mean, we're gonna be requiring these, we're gonna be requiring these things to be, to be recorded. That's what we want. We want that to happen.
Yeah, but that's why I don't understand why at your discretion has to be in there. Like, is that like a safety measure in case you don't have the equipment or something like that? Because
Yeah, it's just.
I'm not trusting the city's discretion on many issues. It's particularly in the police department, so that wording doesn't sound, feel comfortable to me.
Well, I, I can, I can assure you, Counselor, we'll be recording those sessions. That's our intent.
Okay, well, that still doesn't reassure me very much, Bill, but I guess the wording is in there at your discretion, and then we could come back later when one is not recorded and say, well, it's at the employer's discretion per the union contract. So that just doesn't feel comfortable to me. And like, your answer isn't gonna change, and neither is mine, but thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Counselor Whitfield. Anybody else? I don't see hands up. Bill, good descriptions of, of the contract and good information. Thank you. Is that, did this one take? It seems to me that most of the police contracts, the four-year ones, take about this amount of time, or in the middle, you know, there's a couple of years left. Was this roughly the same?
You know, with, with all of the, the contracts that I've been bringing to you of late, you know, I would, I want to impress upon the council that, you know, we've been doing this throughout COVID. So, you know, we've been doing, we've had remote discussions, remote negotiations. I mean, it's really been a very, it's been a fascinating time, as much as it has been a tragedy, and I don't want to belittle that at all. It's been just a very odd time to negotiate, because so much of the stuff we've done, you know, for many times, we wouldn't even sit across from anybody. I'd be in my office or in my conference room, and I'd be masked up, and the labor relations associate would be masked up, and we might have a management rep zooming in from somewhere else. And then there'd be people from all over negotiating with us. It was, it's really, it's been a very odd time to negotiate contracts, because as you know, so much of our work is done face to face.
Right. Okay, well, thank you for getting them ready for us. I don't see any other hands up on, on this, so we'll move on to item five, which is the collective bargaining agreement for the library employees. Get us going on that one, please, Bill.
Yep. So there, there are approximately thirty-nine employees in this bargaining unit. And I would note that about a third of them, thirteen of them or so, are part-time employees. They include the senior shelvers, the senior pages. Senior clerks is a very popular title in this group. Principal clerk, maintenance supervisors. That's the, the gist of what this bargaining unit is. Negotiations began on January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. We had five bargaining sessions, followed by three mediation sessions. And then we settled this contract on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, on the morning of a scheduled fact-finding. The contract covers the periods of July one, two thousand twenty-two, to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three, and July one, two thousand twenty-three, to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, I think that's twenty-five, twenty-six, I'm sorry. The first year was seventy-five percent, I'm sorry, was a seventy-five cent per hour increase in year one. The second year was a seventy-five cent per hour increase in year two. Year three and year four were two percent, two percent. We added Juneteenth as a holiday. We also, again, cleaned up the Janus Agency Fee Language in this contract. We had some language in the grievance procedure that needed to be cleaned up, which we did. We addressed the change in the parental leave law in Massachusetts in this contract, contract. We adopted the military leave ordinance that was passed by the city council and included that in here. We made most of the part-time employees eligible for holiday pay. We reduced the religiously from five days per year to two days per year to be consistent with our other library contract, and we provided a one-time retention bonus of five hundred dollars per person.
Okay, thank you. Anybody want to comment on this, or do you have any questions on the library contract? Library employees contract. Not seeing any hands up. Give it one more call. Any, any comments on this one? Some third contract that we are going through. All right, not seeing any, any hands up. Good job, Bill. And I think we're, I don't know if you're involved with this contract term thing that's coming up next, probably not, but this moves us on to item six, which is an order authorizing a contract term over three years for two fiber optic networks for the city and the school department. Somebody gonna speak on this? Lindsey, TJ, is this something you guys know about, or?
Yeah, it is actually. We're supposed to have IT, and somebody from the Law Department will be at the regular meeting. I guess they're not here, but they are going to be going out for fiber optics projects for both the city and the school department. Gonna be going out to bid, so all we're requesting here is the ability to execute a contract more than three years.
Okay, so there's nothing really to approve at this point, other than just approving potentially?
Yep, once we decide on a vendor for the project, we're just asking that we're able to execute a contract with them for five years versus the three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thanks for filling that in. Anybody, oh, I see Counselor Whitfield has her hand up. Go ahead, Counselor Whitfield.
Um, so Lindsey, they want to go out to RFP for a contract over three years. Is this a contract that we ever had before, any experience with before?
No, so this is not something we've done before, and it's too faceted, so it's the school department and the city. The school department gets different rates. The school department can do different things procurement-wise. So we just have to make sure from the city side that we're covered as well, because we do want to use one vendor to do both sides. So we're just making sure from the city's perspective, we're covered with, with being able to move forward with a five-year contract. But no, this is something we haven't done before. This is to set up the fiber optic network through all the city buildings and all the schools.
So what if we get a contractor that does terrible, we'll be locked in for five years instead of three?
Well, just like on any, any contract, if they're not, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing for the contract, we always have, have ways to end a contract. That's the Law Department puts all those legalese in there.
Okay, I think, um, we'll wait for law, I'll wait for law to get into more details, Lindsey, because they'll probably have them. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Whitfield. Good question. Anybody else on this item, item six? Okay, not seeing anybody. We'll consider that one closed until hopefully we'll have answers for Counselor Whitfield in the, in the regular meeting. Item seven, appropriation order for taking damages for St. James Avenue at the Crewe Street intersection. And number eight is, goes along with it. It's the order of taking of land and easements for the St. James Avenue, Crewe Street intersection, so they kind of go together, it appears. Uh, somebody here for that one?
Uh, yes, Counselor Chris Signoli, DPW Director. Yeah, we have the two orders, as we usually do, for easements and land takings. We appropriate the funds, and then we approve the takings. The project, which I'll call St. James, St. James and Carew, is a reconstruction of the double intersection. St. James Avenue is basically from Meridia to Ames Street. St. James Boulevard is Carew to Fordham, and Carew is St. James Boulevard. Saint James Boulevard is Carew to Fordham, and Carew is Saint James Boulevard to Hobart. Uh, so it's taken into a a pretty large area there. The project was initiated by DOT, the design work. Uh, reviews, we've held public hearings. And at this point in April of twenty-three, the project is slated to go out to bid uh for uh for construction, which hopefully we can start construction later this year. It's intended to take about one and a half construction season. And it's about a nine-point-three million dollar uh project with mass DOT, all uh expenses included. We have as part of the project thirteen partial land takings, forty-six temporary construction easements and eight permanent construction easements. And just to give everybody an idea of what those are, the permanent construction easements are for signs that will be placed uh after the project is complete, directional signage, et cetera, and most of those are in the area of eight square feet. Uh, so there will be a sign on somebody's uh uh behind the sidewalk, and it will be a um easement for that sign. The partial takings, uh, there are thirteen of them. Six of them are associated with the parcel where Big Y is. Uh, there's some roadway widening that's happened there, and that parcel is divided up into a number of sub-parcels. And then across the street, there are a number of very, very small takings uh that are in the area of a hundred or two hundred square feet uh of these parcels where we are doing some widening um and installing sidewalk. The temporary construction easement, excuse me, easements basically touch every property uh up and down the entire project per mass DOT regu- DOT regulations. Uh, we're replacing sidewalks and driveway ramps. So if somebody is getting a new sidewalk and a new driveway ramp, ramp per DOT, we are required to get a five-foot or so easement behind at the uh backside of the sidewalk onto the property. So uh each one of those is logged in, and we are have a total um compensation amount to all of these people of two hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, once the takings have been completed, we can then notify Mass DOT and the project can move forward for uh for bidding.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chris, just a question from me. Does this include both of Saint James uh inner intersections, the one by CBS? Which is like a block up, or is it just the Carew Street one?
No, it's both. It's uh, that's why I call it Saint James, Saint James and Carew. It's both intersections plus legs on both sides of Saint James Avenue is a little bit longer, because we're going from before CBS to after Big Y and uh Saint James Boulevard is from where the, where Carew comes in to just about at the beginning of uh Marshall Roy Field, and then Carew is from where Carew and Saint James come together going uh past the school by, uh, I think it's Hobart Street. Uh, so it's a pretty lengthy project that they're doing, and the expansion there is for everybody who's been on Saint James, it's a little uh uh confusing. There's not enough lanes. There's actually gonna be a new traffic signal and controlled entrance in front of Big Y. Uh, because right now I think there's six entrances to get in and out of that parcel, so it's a little bit of a mess there. Uh, so we've, as I said, we've had the public hearings and presentations and uh, project's ready to go up to bid at this point, hence we're at this point for the easements.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there are three hands up in the queue. I don't see who went up first. Uh, Counselor Fenton, since that's your ward, is you have informational stuff about it that might help uh trust to hear first?
Uh, sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to say that it's a terrific project. I want to thank Chris and his team and MDOT for working on it. We've been after this for over ten years, and um I don't really have anything to add except that uh, the neighborhood's excited about the improvement and uh, want to thank Chris and his team for their involvement in the public hearings that were conducted. Um, I did have uh just one question, Chris. I I spoke with neighbors and have been speaking with them for months about some of the impacts. Uh, but I had a couple of neighbors reach out to me today about uh who they should speak with as a point of contact. They've obviously uh can reach out to BPW do, uh but they've also received correspondence from Attorney Sushuk and uh and MDOT. If if residents have questions about timing and exact relocation efforts for their fencing and landscaping and that kind of thing, who would you direct them to?
They should go to either me or to Andy Carr, the city engineer. Uh, be rather, that don't, you know, don't talk to Mass DOT, because we'll be the agent for that. Robert was the one who put together all of the orders uh for through the law department who did it. So anybody who has questions on it uh should be contacting me or Andy, and we'll get them any information that they need.
Thank you very much. Great project.
All right, thanks, Counselor Fenton. Um, Counselor Hurst, I'll take a guess that you were first. I don't know. Um, we'll get to Counselor Whitfield right right after. Go ahead, Counselor Hurst, you have the floor.
Uh, Chris, quick question. Um, I noticed when some uh when the street work was done over actually by Counselor Walsh's area. Uh, the driveways that were concrete in nature were in turn uh filled in with sort of like, I don't know if it's tar, um, I don't know what you call it, but it didn't match, and it and it looked hideous. And so I guess my question to you is, is there a plan to return these individuals' driveways who are impacted to their original condition or better than their original condition, working in conjunction with the actual homeowners?
All of the driveway ramps, whether they're for commercial or residential, are all gonna be concrete. Because they will, and then they will also be tied into any new driveways that will be done there as well. So everything that's going in there is concrete.
Do you know what I'm referring to out by Counselor Walsh's area?
Particularly, no, because I I'm gonna say ninety-nine percent of the driveways that we put back in are always, at this point, are always concrete.
Okay. What what is it? Is it? I I I went and looked, and I I'm probably not defining it correctly, uh but I looked at a couple of those driveways, and it was obvious that it didn't match what was already there, and uh it 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 was awful and received uh complaints from residents. And so I just want to make sure that we're, you know, either returning it to the, to its regular condition or making it look even better.
Yeah, it's gonna be all concrete, and if you have a specific address, let me know, because I haven't re- uh, we've worked with a number of homeowners there. And I know if we're talking about Somnerav and Long Hill Street, that area, everything was concrete. Uh, we, when we do some residential streets, sometimes when we are not doing full sidewalk replacement, we may just do asphalt what was there. Uh, but if we're doing sidewalk work, well, it's always concrete.
It's the street that lead, and maybe it's Washington Road. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
We did Washington Boulevard.
It's 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 Washington Boulevard. It's the street that that bucks the actual back of the park.
Yeah, that's Washington.
On that particular street, there are some driveways uh or sidewalks leading to the driveways and look absolutely hideous when I went by and looked at. So uh, just just something to think about. If you have a plan and you're satisfied with it, fine. Uh, hopefully, we'll we're working in conjunction with residents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hurst. Uh, oh, uh, over to Counselor Whitfield, please.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Um, my only question, Chris, is does everyone whose land is being taken, are they all aware of it? Is there anyone that's not happy with it?
No, the, we only, I received one call from the uh, I believe the reverend at the church, or I I let me say, our department received one call. The reverend at the church that's on the corner of Hobart and Carew. And yeah, when we send out the notices for the land takings, one of the things that, well, for takings or easements, one of the things that stated in there that's a little scary and we have to explain to people is we get these easements for five years. Uh, when we work with Mass DOT, we do them for either three or five years. And we always do them for five, and it's not that when some people see that, and initially with his thought was, oh, my God, my place is gonna be torn up for five years. No, we get it for five years. So, uh, for example, if we did it for three, and it went out to bid uh this year, but they didn't start till next year, and then it took more than two years, then the easements expire. So uh what we did is we talked to him, we said, and this happens to be a person who on their parcel, they're just getting a new sidewalk and a new driveway ramp. So that we, you know, we tried to explain to him that that work at most is probably gonna disturb you for a week or two or three, tops. And the whole project may take a year and a half, but that worked there uh for that, and that was the only um uh, call that I believe we received. These notices have to go out more than a month in advance. So I know that they were sent out, I want to say the first week, either the last week in November or first week of uh December. Uh, so we have to give a minimum of thirty days notice, and I didn't receive any other uh uh calls or questions. The only other entity that we're dealing with on this is actually Big Y, who owns a uh the big parcel there. And uh Ever Source is trying to coordinate with them, because they're gonna have to do some additional electrical work on their property, but that's something they're working through together that they were doing even before this project.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for your question. Uh, Counselor Hurst, there's still, your hand is still raised. I don't know if that's leftover or if you've got a new question.
It's accidental. I'll take it down now.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Um, I don't see anybody else's hands in the queue, so I assume we're okay. And we can move, uh, we can conclude our discussion on item seven and eight, which we took together. And we have one other item. It is a resolution on an order to use three-point-seven million dollars to eliminate the trash fee. Um, first, um, I I was gonna ask TJ if he would talk about this uh as the chief financial officer. If you have a response to this, or and then we'll have uh others who want to speak on it um uh as as appropriate. So, uh TJ, do you have a a comment on this or any of any opinion? TJ, are you there?
Sorry about that. What was the question, Counselor?
Uh, we're on the uh proposal to reduce or to eliminate the trash fee for next year. And I just didn't know as CFO if you had a comment on that uh on that proposal.
Yeah, so I sent out a memo to the city council last Friday where um, just referencing the fact that the city council cannot initiate a financial order per Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four. Uh, and then the second part is the law that creates the CAFO position um has to have every financial order come through the city, uh, the CAFO for certification prior to going on the agenda, and that didn't happen either. Um, from that's an operational perspective, but from a financial perspective, uh, we have an enterprise fund that's roughly twelve million dollars, uh twelve-point-four million dollars, and three-point-seven roughly comes from uh the trash fee, and uh we would have a deficit in the account um there, or we'd have to transfer money in from another um account. I believe the recommended was free cash for the order that's on the agenda today. Um, financially, I don't think this is makes the most sense, because we need uh sustainability uh for future years and making sure that we look at uh how we fund our enterprise fund and making sure that the revenue is consistent.
Okay, okay, thanks for your comments. Um, Counselor Hurst, this, I believe it was you to put this on the agenda. Did you want to to comment on it?
Uh, I've sent you all an amendment uh to this particular order. Uh, I know there was some confusion at the outset. Uh, it is indeed a resolution, and I've amended the order as such, and so you all should have received that. Anything that I'll say further will be on the floor.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Um, and uh Mr. Signoli, deep, from a DPW standpoint, did you have anything else to add relative to your in charge of trash for the city?
No, the the only other thing I wanted to add is a little bit on TJ's side is that if there's a elimination of the trash fee, um, trash bills for this this current fiscal year go out uh in the next five weeks or so. Uh, it, we, we put the bills out uh beginning of March. Um, they get sent out the end of February for for a March payment. Um, so this fiscal year, all the money that is raised as part of the enterprise fund is, will be for this current year. So I know one of the items that I had in there, or one of the items that was in there was talking about, uh, I wasn't sure exactly which fiscal year we were talking about. Uh, number two, if there was elimination of the trash fee, as TJ was talking about, um, a lot of money needs to be moved around, because within the DPW enterprise fund, there are things that we pay for, such as parents' retirement holidays that because it's an enterprise fund, have to be calculated in there. Those things then have to be moved over. I believe they'll end up under bill uh in HR where all of the uh insurance and all that good stuff uh for the rest of the city employees ends up as well. Uh, the other item is that it is part of a ordinance. So the ordinance would have to be modified for elimination of the fee. And elimination of the fee then opens up to people who are not currently enrolled in the trash program, because it's part of the ordinance, would then be able to opt back in. And then it also opens up the idea for businesses and other uh tax aided because then it would be, it would be general fund, so we would then be opening up to some of those businesses to come back in. The other item that I was looking at as well is that if we are not taking in revenue, the enterprise fund then ceases to exist. So we then have to get rid of that, because we can't create the enterprise fund unless there is revenue um significant amount of revenue associated with that. So there's a whole host of things in the background that would need to happen uh rather than just saying we want to eliminate the trash fee. So those items would then also have to be discussed, and what I'm seeing around as well is just skyrocketing costs uh for waste in general. And other communities, there's no other community, obviously, that charges a trash fee. Uh, the way that we do it, however, every other community is incrementally uh hitting all of its citizens, and you know, one of the things that I was looking at is Wilberham. Wilberham, you want to get rid of a mattress in Wilberham, it's forty bucks. Um, you want to go to uh Chicopee or East Long Meadow or Long Meadow, you're getting a thirty-gallon barrel. Uh, so everybody is kind of doing their own different thing related to attempting to reduce costs um in their community. So bottom line to me is there's a lot of stuff in the background when you eliminate the trash fee of what then needs to be looked at before we would move forward.
Okay. Excellent. Good information. Thank you for for that. Um, I don't think we have anything else on the agenda. Did I miss some? I see a couple of hands up. Um, Counselor Walsh and Counselor Govan. Uh, Counselor Walsh, would you go first?
Sure, uh, thanks very much. I just want to uh, I just want to point clarification here. Um, I am aware that the uh city council cannot initiate a financial order. But I can't imagine there are any restrictions to city councillors making a suggestion about a financial order, that that would not need permission from anybody.
That is correct.
Good, so we don't have to change anything.
Take it. Okay, good. Uh, thanks, thanks, Officer Walsh. Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so my question, I guess, was regarding the trash fee, which I think is uh, this is a great amendment that uh Counselor Hurst has put forward at this time in light of everything else that's going on. Um, Chris, you said correctly that everything is going up, everything costs more, and that's including for our residents. Um, I have a whole list of property tax complaints um when they got the last property tax. I guess my question is, when the trash fee was instituted, um, I thought that it was going to be temporary, because it was at a time where, um, I guess the city was um in need of having a trash fee, because we're, I think our property taxes are supposed to pay for the trash um collection. Is that correct, that it was supposed to be temporary?
That I don't know, because it was instituted before I got here. I want to say it was instituted in oh-six, oh-seven, oh-eight, something. That I don't know, because I was instituted before I got here. I want to say it was instituted in oh-six, oh-seven, oh-eight, something like that, TJ?
Yeah, so that's, so I got here just, just around the time that they kind of were battling about the trash fee, whether or not they took it to court and all that. Uh, I was never under the impression that it was temporary. I know. When it was, the number they chose was, was a number they needed just to balance the budget the year they implemented it. That's why it was just ninety dollars. Uh, other than that, I, I wasn't part of any of those conversations.
And, and actually, when it was initially uh enacted, I believe it was a hundred and twenty-five for a couple of years. And it was then reduced down to ninety, I want to say oh-nine, uh, once the control board went away. Uh, you know, the only other issue that I would say is that if you, one of the things that. Um, I, I don't want to say I, I liked about the trash fee, but one of the things is that it is targeted for people. Who are disposing of trash and whether we're talking about trash recycling, yard waste, uh, house or hazardous waste, when if we. I know the discussion now is to take it out of free cash. If the idea was to move forward in subsequent years. By using uh general fund money, then that just rolls into the uh, that rolls into the tax-based cal- calculation. Where people smarter than me will figure it out, so it would end up rolling backwards um into increased taxes at that point. That would then be shared over people who don't get trash service. So that was one of the reasons why it was also targeted in that way as well.
Okay, and I guess another.
Me by reading through the ordinance.
Sure, uh, uh, I guess another comment that I guess I have is. Um, not only the trash fee, but the property taxes and everything else. Um, we do have our increased tax revenue from the cannabis industry that we have now in, in the city. Um, we have the MGM casino who was supposed to increase our, um, our revenues. So I just, I just really hope that we could look um at really what we have going on now in the city. And really think about the residents that are suffering, you know, and this is not. Residents living in poverty, this is not residents who, you know, aren't able to, to get the services like the, um. The fuel assistance and things like that. These are working people who have jobs, who have retired and now are. You know, getting a pension and are struggling to, to make ends meet right now. So thank you for that and thank you for, on the information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you councillor Govan. Councillor Govan, uh, you and I are the only members, I believe, of the finance committee still here. Uh, councillor Whitfield had to leave. Um, did you want to make a, a motion? We have two choices. We can make a motion and uh on how we, how you, depending on what the motion was. Uh, um, on what we approve here as a finance committee. Or we could um just close the meeting and take up the discussions um at the, at the full meeting. Do you have a, do you have any inclination to make a mo-?
Motion to close? We have to vote, ways, right?
Well, we, yeah, you can make, you can just make a motion to close or you can make a motion to, to approve the items. It's, it's.
Okay, well, like, I'll make a motion that we approve the items that we talked about, is to bring forward to the meeting, correct?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, yep.
Um, Mr. Chair.
I, I, I second. I also vote with councillor Govan.
Mister Chair.
Alright, everybody, thank you for attending the meeting. Oh, Caterrey, did you have something else?
Yeah, I wanted to know if your committee can make a chair to support the contracts, because there didn't seem to be any. Um, that seemed to be pretty unanimous, the support for the contracts.
Yeah, so what are you suggesting? Yeah, it seemed to, it seemed full support to me, but what do you think?
Make your committee report, you can say that the committee and whatever uh were pleased with the, the, the contracts and that you support them.
Yeah, I'll be happy to do that. Yep. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Uh, from my standpoint, I got, I gotta close out, because I want to be in the chamber in person in a little while, so.
Thank you.
Get, get a little, get a little close. Uh, all right, thanks, everybody. Have a great day.